...to M1 General Industrial District, Loudoun County Tax Map 006, Parcel 021.01, Located at 16250 El Camino Lane, Loudoun County, Tennessee, Located in the 5th Legislative District.
Okay. Okay, and the next one?
The next one is a resolution to amend the Loudoun County zoning resolution, Article 5, Zoning Districts, Section 5.043, R1 Suburban Residential District, pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 13-7-105.
And number 3 is the one that Adam Waller moved to your area from the last workshop?
No, no.
It's not. We've added Adams, but that's still Jim's.
Yeah, this actually was, it was just something I was trying to send commission that was showing what the current regulation stated and what the proposed regulation was.
Okay. Why? You want to do yours later on?
Add me under Commissioner Shaver, like the 9.
Okay. Is there anybody from the general public that wants to address any one of these three zoning changes and resolutions? Step to the podium, tell us your name and what you're concerned. Okay. What are we adding? We're adding...
Still a day right here.
The PUDs, when we talked about PUDs last time, somehow it made it on here.
Okay, right here. All right, when we get done with Van Shaver, Commissioner Shaver, I'll refer to you, Commissioner Waller, okay? Okay, let's open the meeting.
Here.
I've asked Commissioner Whitfield to do that.
Tinker?
Here.
Satterfield?
(Inaudible) please, 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 Mr. Satterfield, to the flag of the United States
Here.
Whitfield?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Shaver?
Here.
of America, in the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty
Waller?
Here.
Okay. Okay, next up is the adoption of the Loudoun County Commission Agenda for August 3, 2020.
and justice for all.
Before you start, could Mr. Satterfield tell you about...
Before we have a crack, could we have just a moment of silence in memory of Jerry
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as we changed it with Adams added.
Mazingo, a former county commissioner that passed away Saturday morning?
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, please, the commission adopted withdrawal by nomination for the Ethics Committee
Okay.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day.
at this time. We would like to add a 9-1-1 board, Ms. Kelly Branham, who is the Do-Any Director, who will place former Director Smith.
Okay.
Thank you for the honor to be here to support and represent the citizens of Loudoun County.
Please, this commission, thank you.
Somebody leaving the Ethics Committee, just another one?
Okay.
I ask that you look over our first responders, add and protect them as they protect us.
Yeah, there's a vacancy on there now.
Okay. We got a motion, and do we have a second to adopt the agenda as amended?
I ask that you watch over our military, those serving here and abroad.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Waller.
I also want to thank the beautiful weather for Saturday that allowed our students, Loudoun
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
and Green, to graduate and get those kids through a long process.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I ask these things in your name.
Next up, has everybody read the minutes from the June 29, 2020 commission meeting?
Amen.
Okay, Tammy, call the roll.
Brister, Deere, Mayor?
I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Here.
I make a motion.
Go ahead, I'll say.
Okay, we got a motion by Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. Any further discussion?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next up is general public comments. The only one that's signed up is Dr. Barker from Lenora City School. Step to the podium and tell us your concern.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you. I just wanted to come and share with you some information that may have addressed some concerns that were left over from the workshop, that we had a discussion regarding the adequate facilities tax. And so I have shared with each of you a worksheet where hopefully it will answer some of the questions that you had. It shows the formula there. It also gives some information about the Loudoun County residents, that this actually affects, and how that is figured in here. You will see also a question that was, that came up, you'll see that we addressed, the question of where does this money go to in the budget? It actually has its own line item, and it indeed is, we don't call it AFT, we call it other local auction taxes, that's the only thing that goes in that line item. And so we are able to track that, and it goes directly toward the expenditures for capital improvements. And you can see there a list of the receipts from AFT and our expenditures that far exceed the amount that we receive. So any reduction in that amount is going to be harmful to the school system and to the Loudoun County students, all Lenora City and Loudoun County students, because they're one in the same, who attend our schools. So again, it is my desire that there not be any reduction or moving of any of those dollars, because it does affect the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the general public comments. Mayor Buddy Bradshaw.
Mr. Chairman, the board includes that there, they all thought that we were setting out a table, executing nomination at this point in time, considering changes there, we'd like to add Kelly Branham replaced Darrell Smith on the 9-1-1 board, if I'm not mistaken, we can vote all these all at once, or if anybody wants to pull any of them out, we can as well.
Make a motion to approve. Change the debate.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve it. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Once this is approved, and if you're ready to get in touch with Mr. Johnson, I think that the mayor's board does need to meet within the next, what, amount of time?
Yes. Mayor's Board is in right here.
Okay.
Hang on, we'll set it.
Well, since the sheriff's doing this way.
Oh, okay. Check that, I check that.
Well, I actually called the sheriff this afternoon, he won't be back until the end, I'll call him tomorrow. When they do a special call or something, just before the workshop, we can get it taken care of.
Just three member board.
Yes.
I don't know what you're saying, but...
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Mayor's Board's three member board.
Yes.
Well, plus Sheriff Guyder and another individual that would be appointed, so actually five.
Okay. Any changes to be made?
No, sir.
Okay, we removed the Ethics Committee, add 9-1-1 with Kelly Branham on it. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Jim Jenkins, come on back.
Make a motion that we will go reading the second time and vote on them as they're listed.
I'll say.
I'm sure Jim will go with that.
I'm smiling.
He's smiling.
He's smiling, we gotta see, gotta know.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution A, which involves the 5th Legislative District.
Make a motion to approve the Rezone.
Okay, do we have a second?
I take it.
Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Duff. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. B.
The next one is clarification in the wording, he's given us all the documents before and after, when it was the 2.5. I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission recommendation on that one.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Satterfield.
Have a question, Chairman.
Go ahead.
And this is just the ones that we had put on pause until we corrected some of the wording.
This takes care of the, what's the word of hunting? Moratorium. After the night, moratorium's over. That's correct.
It's over. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 3 is the R1 current and proposed language documents for referral.
That was part of this, what we already did. Number 3 was just the difference between what it was and what it is now.
All right. All right, thank you, Jim. Okay. Susan Husky would be up next for her phone service contract, but she's in sickbay. So Mayor Bradshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is it, the paperwork is included, this is the contract. Director Husky taught us about at the workshop, and I'll just compliment her team, they do a great job all around. If it wasn't the what's the best for Loudoun County, it would really surprise me. That'd shock me, so make a motion to approve.
I'm saying...
We got a motion approved by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Brewster. Any further discussion? We simply have to have phones for the schools. Okay.
They all got one to talk to, schools need one.
Okay. Call the roll on this one, because there's money involved.
Mayor?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Tinker?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brister?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, the reans are machines. Anyway, next up is Commissioner Shaver and the AFT.
I'll not belittle it, we've covered it well, Ms. Barker's covered it well. I said last time, just come up with a conversation in budget, didn't come up with budget recommendations at this point in time, I'm sure we'll discuss it other times. The amount of money, I passed out a sheet last time, it's $50-ish thousand. My intent is to bring it back to the county school system, to put it in their capital projects fund, and so I'm going to put it in the form of a motion that somewhere it's written, consideration of changing our shared AFT with Lenora City Schools from 85, 15 to 90, 10, it wouldn't take effect until July 1st of 2021. That's in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll give him a second so we can discuss, because I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
All right, let me share this with you, and I'm kind of like Ken, I thought this went to everybody, but apparently it didn't. This comes from Bob Bowman today, and we had had the question to him, I'm sorry, I've got to put my eyes on it. We'd had the question to him about this, it had come up the last conversation, if we can only use this, the county passed it, if we can only use this for county schools' capital projects and debt service, is it even legal to send it to Lenora City?
That was my question.
That's right, I think, I think for all these years, it never really crossed my mind, so that came up several times. And Bob Bowman's answer to two parts of it was, I'm writing to provide you an answer, can the county share of the revenue from adequate facilities taxes with the city school system located within the county? If so, for what purpose must the city system use it for? His answer, it's unclear whether a county can share the tax revenue with the city school system located within the county. There is no statutory authority, case law, or Tennessee Attorney General opinions on this matter. However, based on the plain language of Tennessee code such and such, if a county shares the tax revenue with the city school system, the city school system must use the money the same way we did. Ms. Barker has drawn us some documents tonight that kind of show that's what they're doing with their share of it. So I didn't have an issue, I don't care what you did with it, to be very honest, it wasn't my concern. And I'm not terribly torn up about whether we can and we can't, it's been going on for 14 years now, and my fear would be if we, we was to go digging in this, and somebody is, some high level, someone might say, well, it's all going to be paid back, or somebody's going to pay a penalty, and I'm not looking for that argument anymore. I would just have simply moved 5% over, didn't really want to open up a whole can of worms. So that's Bowman's statement, doesn't know whether we truly can or can't, don't they, it would take higher power to answer that question, but if we do, it has to go to us, just like ours does, and she says that's what they're doing.
And Dr. Barker explained that this evening at the podium, along on the sheet here.
The other question I had, I already put the first one out there, is whether the county can do what we've been doing for 14 years. The other one's Tracy, has this ever come up in the audit from the state about, you know, where we, that we're sending, giving this money to Lenora, sharing the money with to Lenora City, or anything like that? Would that pop up in their...
As if it's inappropriate to send it?
Yes.
No, that has not, that has not come up. It is reported in our audit, in the schedule, along with other local taxes that are forwarded to Lenora City Schools in some total by this school year. And so it's not that audit is not aware of it, they are. But there has never been any indication that the county should not send it because of, you know, some limitations imposed by the Comptroller Office.
And we cleared through, what, three clean audits?
Friggin' consecutive.
Yeah.
Yes, and this has been going on for...
Who's the... How many? Job well done by Tracy, how many? How many governments in the state of Tennessee, local, county, city, do AFT?
13, I think Bob Bowman said.
Well, originally, when we passed this in 2006, I think there were 16, but their hands have been, we're saying been a reduction in that, because, I don't know, that's just the way they feel.
There were only certain counties that were even eligible to do it. You had to have a certain percentage of growth, I mean, it was, it was a small parameters that you had to fit, you had to do it, population of such, you had to be growing at certain, certain, such a percentage and all that. And it was, it was a very lengthy and long process.
I just asked that question to see if...
And I don't know the answer to myself, I don't have a clue.
If there were any other systems that were doing what we're doing, sharing AFT?
I don't know. I bet it'd be something we can find out, though.
Yeah. On that, on that audit, I know that Tracy does a great job, but we don't want to overlook the hard work and time put in by the chairman of the Audit Committee, whoever that is.
Whoever that is, yeah. Not met in two years now, three, something like that? Yeah.
Surely noted, Commissioner Tinker.
Put that in the minutes somewhere. The Audit Chairman's doing such a great job.
Any further discussion on the AFT?
Chairman, Dr. Barker, with the information that you gave today, since this is considered an MOE, then if we take it away, we're going to have to replenish the coffers, I believe, in order to maintain MOE for Lenora City Schools.
If there are MOEs?
Yes.
How is that?
Not all of us would agree that Ms. Barker's correct on the county having to provide Lenora City MOE.
I'm not, man, I don't, that, to me, I don't agree on that.
Yeah, I don't know.
That, to me, the MOE would have to be Lenora City's government's responsibility.
That's their responsibility.
Yeah, to maintain MOE.
I think some of them, it should be our process, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, because we're not actually giving a section, a chunk of the AFT money, we're actually, the school board is just allotting them the money that equals that percentage, so, and I think that's great, Lenora City Schools are using it that way as well, I think that, am I right with that?
Who actually is giving them money then? Is it the Loudoun County School Board?
No, it's the county.
It's coming from us.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
We get a report each month, as you are very well aware. We get a report each month from the trustee's office. And once we get that report, there are several local revenues that then the accounting department can receive, because the trustee is the initial contact on them. Property tax, of course, is one of them. Adequate facilities tax is another one. The trustee is responsible for collecting that in the county. And so when we get that report, then we receive, or we make a deposit on the amount of AFT that was collected by the trustee. The trustee has already done the math on the 15% that was collected that month, and then 15% of the AFT is included in the check that goes to Lenora City, along with other local taxes that are based on the ADA. As far as the county's responsibility for MOE, the county has the responsibility for MOE as related to the county school system only.
My thinking, I don't think that we would be held responsible for Lenora City's MOE, but that's not what we're here about, that's just, that could be a whole nother debate.
Okay, any further discussion?
That probably goes in that category of opening that can of worms.
We could always get the Audit Chairman to look into it, or since he's so...
So thorough.
Yeah.
That's good way to do it.
Call for the vote. Okay, here's the vote. A yes vote will be to reduce it from 15 to 10%, and no vote will be to leave it the way it is.
That boy here, making it difficult.
I'm not making it difficult, I'm trying to make it easy for you.
Yes, no, no, it's yes.
Okay.
Maybe some who knows.
Call the roll.
Hurley? No. Tinker?
No.
Satterfield?
No.
Whitfield?
No.
Cohen?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Shaver?
Why, yes. No.
No.
Okay. Today's the same.
We'll get to budget side.
Thanks for clearing that up.
But we're going to talk to him first.
Barker.
You can talk to him.
We need to, I would like this, if we can kind of find out, you know, I'd hate to ask questions, then somebody come find out and say, well, you owe.
Yeah. Don't watch your hand. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, this might be just while we're here, and it's going to be a good short night, Ms. Parker's here, something that interests all of us, when the cove apartments were built in Lenora City, don't know how, just fell through cracks, and $800,000 of AFT was not collected. That's $120,000 for Lenora City and $680,000 for Loudoun County. Now, I've asked the question numerous times, well, how did that happen? Well, it just fell through the cracks. Don't know how that, the question I'm not going to get answered, is, does that mean we still can't go back and get it? And I would love to have that question answered, we might have to talk to Mr. Miller up in the office that collects it, we might have to talk to Bob Bowman or somebody, but that's a big old hunk of money that just fell through cracks.
How long ago was that done?
How long ago? Read your...
I am, I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, and told me, I don't know.
So if I, so if I don't get a tax bill for a couple of years, it runs out?
What do you know about this, Ms. Parker, anything?
I don't know.
Those were already built by the time I saw it, so I really don't know that.
So how long ago was that being? When'd you get it?
2013.
13, so it's been a while.
It pre-dates then.
Oh, it's been that long?
Yeah, I didn't have no idea of that. But I just, I don't know if, if you don't pay your property taxes, you don't get to just, well, we didn't pay them, so we don't owe them.
I've never heard of ignoring the past.
So who let it fall through the cracks, though? I mean, how is that a possibility that it falls through the cracks?
Lenora City and Loudoun have to report through their building permits to Chip's office, Jim Jenkins, don't go on? To Chip's office?
No, he's here.
No, does it come, you first or you go to Chip?
Each jurisdiction sends in the copy of their adequate facilities forms that we have filled out office, that goes to Chip's office. Each jurisdiction.
So someone in the Lenora City jurisdiction just didn't send it in? Now, I don't know if that's the only one that's ever not been sent in, but if you missed the $800,000 one, my, my guess is a $500,000, $1,300,000 one might get missed from time to time, just purely by mistake.
So who monitors all of those to see?
The honor system.
The honor system?
No, it's not honor.
Can't it be an honor system?
Each jurisdiction should have the mechanism in place to know if a building permit, you can't build without a building permit.
Who gave them the occupancy agreement? Who said this, okay, this is complete, all the paperwork is complete, occupancy? Who gave that?
But I'm saying, is the honor system for Lenora City...
No, I understand that, but at the very tail end of it, all the i's have to be dotted, all the t's got to be crossed, including that paperwork, somebody gave them an occupancy agreement. Who wrote that?
It would have come from Lenora City.
Then that's the person.
I agree. I'm trying to be pleasant.
I got you, I get it, I get it, but that's, that's the question, is that's the last piece of information before you can step foot inside of a building? That's the person.
If you press the issue, would it be, I don't know if we should go back on the property, because the people, the initial owners may not be, still be there. So would that come back to Lenora City having...
It's still the owners, it's the same people that built it.
Okay, I mean...
In this particular case, the people that built it are still the owners and managers of all of them.
Are they, are they just apartments or...
Huge, it's that real building out there behind the Bishop's Road.
It's the gated one, it's our nicest one, it's like one of the only ones that we have that's all sectioned.
It does, I mean, that is a big, that's a lot of money, I know Dr. Barker...
Why don't we ask Bob Bowman?
Whoever bought the land, whoever bought the land for $1.26 million in 2010 still owns it.
It's the same owner.
I think it would be wise to ask Bob Bowman just to check into it, because you're missing out on your funds, we're missing out on our funds.
But again, if I don't pay property taxes for seven years, I take my property, so like...
It'll take your house.
Well, there are penalties if you don't pay your real estate taxes.
When was it actually, no, I'd be used to it.
I don't know that. All I know is whoever got paid.
Do you have any information on that?
All I remember, I remember picking, it was out there way before 213, 2013.
Well, I was asking Jim.
So that's seven years ago.
Jim, do you have any information on the code? Did you know when it was?
I'm not sure when it was, I'm sure I did.
They bought the property in 2010, that's what I know.
Anyhow, we'll ask Bob if, it may be, if you didn't collect it in five years, you can't get it, so I'm just going to play my property taxes for five years now, well, scot-free, right?
It'll be, it'll be an attack sale to court house.
Lenora City has their own property, their own, they have their own department that's supposed to collect that, don't they?
They have the department that's supposed to issue building permits and then send it to Jim, right?
No, they go straight to the trustee's office.
To the trustee's office.
And accounting office, yes.
And Chip collects them all, right?
Yes.
Chip actually collects the money, and of course, they can get a one-year extension, if they're not sold after one year, they can get a second-year extension. And I'll tell you right now, Chip Miller hates it, because there's so much paperwork to keep up with. But as we've seen in documents I've given in the past, it's generated a lot of money for education for these many years, and it helps us to hold down the property tax rate, because it supplements what would take the property tax otherwise to pay for a lot of things that get paid.
Proceed, Tony, tell him he's got $800,000 to pony up.
Don't tell him that.
I want to know that, seriously.
Information through the trustee's office.
I mean, I'd love to have it, too. You know, I want to make sure that...
$120,000.
We'll get it, we'll get it all confirmed, we'll find out for sure, to the penny what it was. They have the department that's supposed to issue building permits and then send it to Jim, right?
No, they go straight to the trustee's office.
To the trustee's office.
And accounting office.
And Chip collects them all, right?
Yes.
Chip actually collects the money. And of course, they can get a one-year extension. If they're not sold after one year, they can get a second-year extension. And I'll tell you right now, Chip Miller hates it because there's so much paperwork to keep up with. But as we've seen in documents I've given in the past, it's generated a lot of money for education for these many years, and it helps us to hold down the property tax rate because it supplements what would take the property tax otherwise to pay for a lot of things.
Proceed, Tom. Do you tell him he's got $800,000 to pony up?
Don't tell him that.
Information through the trustee's office.
I mean, I'd love to have it, too. You know, I want to make sure that.
$120,000.
We'll get it, we'll get it all confirmed. We'll find out for sure to the penny what it was. I think it was actually maybe a tad more than that, I'm not sure. But we'll work on that and give an opinion for Bob Bowman. My guess is it's sorry you missed the Bowman, be my guess. But you don't know till you ask, so we'll ask.
We'll ask.
I would doubt that it's gonna be sorry.
I don't know. I don't know.
Howard Judge Judy.
Seven o'clock on channel whatever. Buddy, would you ask Bob Bowman what the answer to that is? Because I don't know. And it's seven years ago.
Let's, let's get confirmed with Chip first.
Okay.
Let's get confirmed with Chip, get some background paperwork on what he knows about it, and then we'll go from Chip. And if it's, if it's there, if it sure got missed, if the money was never paid, then we'll get Bob Bowman to give us an opinion of whether or not we can back up and say, hey, we wanna look. I mean, if everybody else happened to pay it, they shouldn't be exempt.
There you go.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, I think Commissioner Shaver will be good at getting that information from Chip.
I'll take care of that tomorrow. How about that?
Okay, good deal. And I think I could find you a black Lincoln to drive when you go collect it.
Yeah.
Okay, Adam Waller.
This was the PUD that we discussed, and we talked to him at the workshop about increasing that number from five to 75 for PUDs. So this has to actually go to the planning commission.
This is only recommendation to the planning commission right now.
This is our, this is.
At the motion.
This is our recommendation to the planning commission.
For them to consider it, then they'll consider it, then they'll send it back to us. I'll second his recommendation, his, his motion to send it to the planning commission.
Okay, so the motion is to move it from what, five to seven, five?
Five to seven.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
From five acres to seven.
For minimum for a PUD, yes.
Okay.
And Jim is supportive of this. We haven't, I mean, we've talked to Jim extensively about this, and he'll be the first to tell you, if he wants to stand up and tell you, that HUDs were never meant to be on five acres.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
So is seven considered Jim minimum?
Yes, if it goes through.
No, it's gonna be 75.
75.
75. From five acres to 75 minimum.
We currently have a cluster option that allows 15,000 square foot lots. Nobody uses it because they just use PUDs instead.
And they don't do nothing.
So we have an option for more dense, but people just use PUDs instead because it's an easier option, I guess.
Jim, what's our average counties? What are the averages around us? Just be curious.
I'm not sure what the counties around us are doing as far as density and things of that nature. I'm not looking.
Part of HUDs and everything, they, they have.
A lot of them most likely just have regulations that take away from using things like PUDs to create the density, they just have standard.
HUDs are horrible.
I know even past administration has wanted to do away with the HUDs in general, or for past directions of the planning office had. But even at that, you know, I feel that there's a place for them. It's just not on five and seven acres. It's five and eight acres, I look. And it's just not on those smaller tracks. I think we'd be better suited to create a good subdivision standard, let developers come in, create subdivisions, you know, the way they really want to, rather than keep having to come up with this HUD regulation.
And we're also still working on the R2 and R3.
Well, excuse me, but why did we come up with 75? Is there a reason 75?
I wanted 700.
Why wasn't it 50?
That was the recommendation from Jim.
There is a magical number except for if you're just thinking about parcels of ground and what a HUD should be, which is a well-developed, thought-out community property and creating these districts. Just thinking of the size of track that would be even suitable for that.
Jim, do you know how big Avalon is? How many acres?
It's, I mean, it's a few hundred acres, right? A couple hundred at least. I mean, there's still some large tracks in that development. The God force itself is probably 127 acres.
What happened to the difference in cluster and HUD?
Which just allow you to go in and, they're only allowed, first of all, in the R1 zoning district. The HUDs are allowed in the A2, C1, C2, and R1, okay? But a cluster option allows you to go into your development, take out 20% of gross land area for infrastructure, and then the rest can be down to 15,000 square foot lots. You can have smaller lots in areas, larger lots in other areas to allow you to. But they look to lay their development to keep the lesser impact on the cost of the development, more or less. Pretty much what they were doing. Unless they were just doing a standard road and cutting up lots, they would do clusters. The Oaks out in Offing North Shore were actually built as a cluster originally.
Does Linnor City have HUD regulations or?
Linnor City has almost no regulations.
I can tell you that Loudoun City does not have the HUD as we said. They have a development district that's.
Yes, when they do.
Makes HUDs look simple. So Loudoun City, it literally just takes and allows a minimum lot size to be created in the development.
I believe they did some changing on that, too. What did they end up doing on the new one out behind Wendy's and?
Yeah, they created the R3 zoning district, which allowed a 7,500-foot lot size, I think is what it is. And so basically, the developers then said, well, we can get this many lots in here, we got unusable land, we don't even care, we'll just create the lots where it's good, and then walk away from the rest and make it community property.
What about like some of the more quiet subdivisions around, does he, would he be able to qualify under this?
He would probably, it would change his layout. So he's probably got some 10,000 acre lots, even though he developed it to a, for most of his subdivisions, to a, but he has 10,000 square foot lots. And it just basically takes a developer and pay and say, I got this much acreage, I can put this many lots on it, no matter how I need to manipulate those lots. And it takes away the unusable property because of top graphics, retention, roads, it takes all that out of it. That's what the HUD does.
Yeah, and that'd be my problem. We've got some rundown communities, no doubt, but we've got some very nice.
Well, there are nice communities, yeah, and, and most people just want to. There's, there's things that even developers look at as far as setting up the planning. I don't think it's the HUDs they care anything about. It's the way they can structure their lots to get these lots in the size limitations that they want.
Really, really what builders are looking for is setbacks to be able to match more houses per acre.
Pretty much, yeah.
That's the end of the story. So HUD overlay, it is, I mean, they're not the greatest thing ever, but it does allow for that design. But if you can come up with something better to allow for that structure, like you don't want to back a kitchen window up to a kitchen window, or a bedroom window, a bedroom window, you don't want to pass sugar through windows.
Which is basically what Loudoun City is doing.
Right, which is what Knoxville does, rural homes. It is what that is. Developers need to be able to get their price per square foot and make their money back on it. So allowing those setback regulations to be less of a setback requirement, then builders can make.
And the setbacks in R2s would be less than the R1.
I understand, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, I get it.
So that's, that's what our.
One pound property doesn't have sewer service, how many houses should be built?
Two and a half.
I mean, I guess under the HUD rates, you know, we, they should be two and a half because we gotta have sewer, right? But you know, in A1 and A2 zoning district, you have minimum lot sizes in the HUD if that goes away.
If you don't have sewer, what is, how much land do you have to have to build a house?
Okay, so.
20,000.
20,000 square feet. One acre, and in the R1, 20,000 square feet.
An acre in which one?
20,000 square feet in the R1. In the A2 and the A1, it's one acre minimum lot sizes.
For, for a separate field if you don't have.
Yes, sir.
That still means anybody has any.
Nobody has.
Came up and they had 73 acres instead of 75 acres. They can still come before the planning commission and talk to them about it and see.
They can make that determination when they do. All we're doing is recommending them. I'm sure Jim will take it to them, and they'll have a very thorough conversation about whether it's 75 or 50, or 150, or whatever it is. But ultimately, they'll be making the recommendation back to us. Maybe not.
You're familiar with our, with our habitat communities. Would this, would Habitat for Humanity be able to build communities under a cluster plan?
Yeah, I mean, anybody could develop under a cluster plan. Most, the Habitat, the one I know of is in Linnor City.
Well, there's one right there, this one behind the middle school as well, but.
I apologize.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it not about schools?
Yeah, but see, that's just it, we're out of land. We don't have any land left, and it's, it's hard at 2.5 to break even.
Ultimately, I don't think developers want to build, build in a HUD regulation unless they really want a HUD. I think ultimately what they want is a standard of, simple, for lack of a better word, subdivision regulations that allow them to take that land and get the most of it. Of course, the county, what they want to do is make sure that doesn't get too dense. And as you all know, you only have one opportunity to develop land.
You mean like Emily's Landing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you mean like Emily's Landing?
You only have one opportunity. That's two points, that is two minutes per acre if I'm not mistaken.
They stretch that acre.
Well, they, they got the.
But that one they're doing, was that in the absolute Linnor Cities?
That's in Loudoun County.
It's Loudoun County.
Urban growth.
Urban growth town. They're the ones that approved that.
Emily's Landing, I'm not sure. I think the one on the other side is, but Emily's.
Emily's Landing in Linnor City, and Bob Bowman is working to find out. His first knee-jerk reaction was, no. It's, I don't know if they're UGB or not, it comes under the county policy. Then he come to the research, and he decided, well, it might be county policy, but under Linnor City control. That's how it's been being done since 2000. It's under Linnor City, they go Linnor City plan, we never see them, we never hear from them, but they have to have applied county regulations. The problem we run into is it doesn't happen. Things are being done and being allowed to be done that violate county regulation. I can, that little thing up on top of Avalon, and, and I asked the Linnor City, Collins, I asked the Linnor City codes officer, I said, well, how did this happen if it has to go by Linnor City? Well, you know, it was a little bit lesser density that way. I said, but, but it's a change. It can't change. Well, it just does.
And the big question is, we're a regional planning commission for the county, but Linnor City claims to be as well. So Bob's trying to navigate what's regional, what's not regional, and it's just a mess.
It's a real mess. Nashville doesn't know.
Well, I just wondering that, you know, if they thought up in Linnor City, they're building right up to the school.
Oh, yeah.
Over there, they're gonna leave Linnor City High School with no place to go if they ever have to.
Well, they're building right against North Mill and, or Eaton's, too, right now, Linnor City is. Let me give you all a quick update right here. Let's see, no, we're in the middle of a motion, so.
You've got a motion and a second.
Let's finish that.
To change from five to 75 acres.
To recommend.
To recommend it to the planning and zoning group.
It's supposed to be a motion.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Now, let me give you a quick update from your trustee. My mistake in the question, so how much did we miss by the code not paying the AFT? I got corrected. We didn't miss it, Linnor City codes missed it. Not sure the number, approximately 300,000 is what he said. I don't know if he means just us or the whole thing, but I'll get the details between now and workshop.
Okay. Okay, Jim, that gets referred to you and your group, so take it from there. Will it come back on September 8?
Probably need to, if I can, I probably need to work closer to the September meeting for, for our planning commission, so we have time to get the resolution.
Okay, so I won't consider it for September 8, 2020 commission meeting. Okay. All right, next up is Tracy Blair.
Buddy has his hand in the air.
Mr. Chairman? I should have said this one in front of you. She took it to Juke Davis's whistle. Now, he's got two grants that they stumbled upon, that are time-sensitive, they are no-match grants. If this commission's willing, we would like to include them under Ms. Blair. And Jim, can I answer any questions?
If you can explain what they are, Jimmy's here.
I should have told you at the beginning, I apologize.
Who's over there shaking the folder around so you can see it?
You got the folder?
And I do, I appreciate the consideration. It's two grants, we're looking to buy a piece of equipment, it's about $27,000 for our narcotics unit. It is called a True Narc. It will evaluate, analyze contents in plastic bags or wrapped up where officers, it's more of an officer's safety, so we don't have to open up bags of what assume to be narcotics, fentanyl. Of course, that's killing officers throughout the country. It analyzes it, it's also used for time-consuming, time-sensitive for court. So we're looking at asking the Good Neighbor Shop and Walmart have a couple of grants. Walmart's 250 to 5,000, and Good Neighbor Shop is anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000, could be, based on funding they have available. No matches, it's just a simple.
What are those two? What's Walmart and Good Neighbor for?
It's that, to apply for a grant. They have a grant that's available to 501(c)(3)'s or government entities, and it's just asking if, without an application, and they.
But not necessarily very specific, but.
Yeah, it's for, it's for the piece of equipment, for the machine, yeah. It's a $27,000 machine to evaluate the contents.
Do you just get, take the rest of it out of?
Well, we're looking to maybe add some money with it later, just kind of collect it to get to the 27,000.
Jimmy, is Tammy Lang gonna help you with Walmart?
I am, yes, sir.
I'm saying, you got it, probably.
Yeah, I hope so. But there's no matching on that, and it goes towards the purchase of a piece of equipment, is what we're planning.
You want to call for it, Tracy?
Uh, yes, I just have a couple of questions. Is it two different grants or one grant?
Two grants.
Two different grants for a combined total of 27,000?
They won't, they won't be that much.
It won't be that much, but the two grants will be utilized to purchase one piece of equipment.
Correct.
Okay. Deadline for September?
Walmart grant is December 31st, 2020, this year. And. I don't know when the Good Neighbors is.
Okay.
I think it may just be available. The urgency is we're needing to get this equipment because we're part of a unit, and we're not going to be part of a unit next month, that we have this at our, more at our discretion to use it. So if there's officers at 2:00 in the morning on a traffic stop, it's accessible to our officers, so we're trying to get the equipment, and these grants, sir, will help us do that. We were looking at a JAG grant, but we're not in the window for a JAG grant.
Okay, is it, are they competitive?
Uh.
Not sure.
I would say not. I don't know when the Good Neighbors is. I think it may just be available. The urgency is we're needing to get this equipment, because we're part of a unit, and we're not going to be part of a unit next month, that we have this at our, more at our discretion to use it. So if officers at 2:00 in the morning on a traffic stop, it's accessible to our officers. So we're trying to get the equipment and these grants to help us do that. We were looking at a JAG grant, but we're not in the window for a JAG grant.
Okay, is it, are they competitive?
Uh.
Not sure.
I would say not. Not too, I think you're just asking. Based on the value of the funds.
Are you going to be looking for another grant, too? Maybe to help fund grants?
It's possible. For capital projects, you never know.
If we get the code money, no.
Okay. How do you want to handle that, Tracy? You want to do it now? You want to do it with the rest, or?
If you don't mind a vote on that separately, that would be great.
We brought Jimmy's reply up.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, this is money involved, so we'll call the roll.
Tinker?
Yes.
Starch?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yep.
Waller?
Yes.
Brewster?
Yes.
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Tinker?
Aye.
Okay.
We still have that Nashville spring in.
That was a three. We took care of all of that last month. Tracy, continue on.
Oh, 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 hold on. No, I'll cover it. Go ahead, go ahead, Tracy, go ahead.
First item under my name listed is consideration of recommendation to approve Community Connect to provide five hotspots for Greenback Library, as well as $2,000 for community workshops. There are no matching funds, and the Budget Committee recommends approving.
Do you want these separate?
I want this one separate from the other two.
I'll make a motion, thank you.
We got a motion? Second. Okay, we got a second for Commissioner Satterfield. Any further discussion? There's no match on the grant. There's money involved, so call the roll.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster? Aye. Mayor?
Aye.
Curly? Aye. Tinker?
Aye.
Okay.
The next are amendments to the Board of Education Fund's General Purpose School, as well as Central Cafeteria Fund 143. These can be voted on together if commission desires. There is a reduction to the projected ending fund balance, well, in both of them, but in general purpose school. The amendments include expense budgets for expenses that are related to COVID. The school business manager told me that they do anticipate reimbursement of at least a portion of those funds. So if that happens, then in the future, we should see an increase in the revenue budget to help offset the expense.
Hopefully, it'll be 75% of.
Mr. Chairman?
We'll see.
Before voting on this, I'd like to ask Mr. Tinker if he could have someone at our next workshop. We've had several people asking about virtual school. Could we have somebody from board to come down and explain this to us? I know roughly, but not everything, and it's.
I can do it.
It sounds good, okay. I think it'd be very beneficial.
I'd prefer you and him get together and talk about it.
Anyway. I'm going to spend at least an hour talking about it at our next, at least an hour.
Oh, no, no, no.
Try to even out.
You know you don't want that.
Even out the time. Even out.
Put me down for an hour.
Are you going to give us a demonstration, too?
Who knows? He loves the slides, he's terrible.
Take the county provided laptop, log into the address, and listen. Okay, we've got two amendments at hand.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Woodfield, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, since there's money involved, we'll call the roll.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Curly? Aye. Tinker?
Because I'm employee of the Board of.
I love to hear this.
I can't even read it.
Mayor, when are we getting to?
Never.
Stop switches, so one person's in the middle of something.
Never.
We just continue on. I declare. My argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Okay. I declare. Ah, there you go.
I declared. Some statements through the month of June were distributed. Just keep in mind that we are still in the process of posting year-end information to the journal. So they're not complete, but I wanted you to have what it is to date. Of course, I'll give you an update once we close. Also distributed copies of Budget Committee meeting minutes from May and two meetings in June that had not previously been distributed, I don't think. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly from Ms. Blair, no details in the HUD numbers. We were really anxious about a couple of revenue streams coming through the end of July that don't always shut down. Do they come, or are they good?
They look good.
Good deal.
Okay.
What's our sales tax look like?
It looks good, it looks great.
Good and great?
It looks great.
If it comes from Tracy, it's great.
It's got to be great.
It's got to be great.
Sales tax looks great. Business tax was one of the ones that we were concerned about. That looks, that looks really good. Hall income tax looks good. Everything looks, it looks good. But of course, remember, we did make some adjustments to the revenue budgets, but based on the budget, it looks good. And of course, once we close, I'll give you a final report.
Those are two different things.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tracy. Commissioner Mears, tell us about the bonds and notaries.
Sue Baker, Tammy Bibbins, Joe DeBoer, Sue Jordan, Teresa Kidd, Shawna Leader, Jacob Phillips, Renee, or Jane Reins, and Rebecca Simmons.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. There you go.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to get an update. First, I point out Kelly Bridgman TV.
TV, yeah.
Kelly Bridgman, new TV there. What's the latest study or whomever on Loudoun Plan? I've read some newspaper articles, I think they were predated, iron ratings and stuff. Are they going to pay? Have they signed an agreement, stuff like that? So they never yet signed an agreement or anything?
They're moving stuff.
So we're done.
It may have been on the, I don't know if it was on the workshop or the meeting or not, they said something.
What, their workshop?
The workshop, I mean, I saw something on it. They know they're withdrawn, they're moving stuff out. Not as we speak, but they were starting last week to move the files and stuff out they had.
Well, I got a question.
And we did not.
About this? Go ahead.
We did not surprise them with this.
No, we did not.
They were informed in plenty of time, and they knew all about it.
Well, we provided a service form for the home of the July. Are we going to get reimbursed for that?
That would be $7,083. I would like to think they would pay the month one day. I know Jim, I wish he was still here, I asked Jim that with him the first week of July, and I think some other things in the interim of July, so we're going to follow up and find out about that.
And Jim did let me know, Jim did let me know that they are going to be finishing up, moving out the documents on Wednesday.
I gave them cardboard boxes, one about the 1.1 million of the state of Tennessee. Is check getting yet?
Not yet.
Okay.[1579.12]